Twenty second. The first item for discussion is contaminated properties. What could be more exciting and rewarding? For this, we have Ecobi Development Manager Becky Newton and Building Official Rafiq Kindi.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. Okay, are we seeing the memo?
Yes.
And you're hearing me okay?
Yes.
Thank you so much.
Okay.
And so to give you a little bit of an overview here. The state of Washington currently has over 13,000 sites on the Washington Department of Ecology confirmed and suspected contaminated sites list. Of those 36 are in Lakewood. Also, 18 contaminated sites have been cleaned up and taken off this list. Sites may take many, many years to clean up. It depends largely on the contaminants as well as the extent of the contamination and whether or not there is motivation to clean those sites. Typically, that is due to a sale. Property owner wants to sell their property or redevelop it. City is concerned both on soil and groundwater contamination and the spread of that contamination and the threat to the environment and to human health. There are basically three types of sites here in Lakewood. The first is the Superfund Site, which is an uncontrolled or abandoned site. Typically, this is, it is monitored by the federal government. These are typically more severe than a typical brownfield site. Lakewood has two such sites. One, the American Lake Gardens Site in Woodbrook. This one was due to the Air Force disposal of waste during the 1940s to the 1970s. This one has been removed from the list and it just continues to be monitored over time. The second one is the Lakewood Ponder's Site. This site is currently on the list and it's due to contaminants being released from a previous Plaza Dry Cleaners and solvents were dumped into a bottomless or bottomless USTs or underground storage tanks. That site has been cleaned up and Lakewood Water has installed some significant equipment, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a few minutes. This is located on the east side of I-5 off of New York Avenue. There's also brownfield sites, which are most of our sites here in Lakewood. Brownfields are those sites that present potentially hazardous contaminants which may complicate reuse or expansion or redevelopment of sites. Those sites are monitored by the Washington Department of Ecology. Within the brownfield sites, there are also USTs, what we call underground storage tank sites. And those have contaminants mostly from petroleum, other chemicals, heating oils, kerosene, and other types of chemicals like that. Those sites are monitored by the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department. And those sites are typically, you know, I would say about 90% of all of our brownfield sites or have some type of UST or petroleum or hazardous materials such as that. And so most of the sites too that we're looking at here in Lakewood are due to gas stations, dry cleaners, or auto-related repairs and maintenance sites or spills that occur. Contaminants that we most likely are to see are lead, petroleum asbestos, also coal suit contaminants from fires, also from manufacturing byproducts of the metals, as well as degreasers, other solvents, as I mentioned, dry cleaners, and also lubricants, paints, and arsenic. I'm going to briefly go through the sites that we have here in Lakewood to give you an idea of what we're looking at. First of all, there are a couple of acronyms I wanted to point out to you guys. VCP is the voluntary cleanup program that Ecology has. Just as a side note, you'll see VCP noted. And then some of the sites, you'll also see PLIA, which means Pollution Liability Insurance Agency. So an owner may opt to go through the PLIA in order to clean up the sites and/or they may join the VCP. NFA means no further action. And that means the owner has met the cleanup targets and the government doesn't consider those sites worthy of additional attention. However, even if an NFA has been designated, there sometimes are restrictions on property for reuse, tenant improvements, change of use, and so forth. So just to kind of briefly go through these items, the properties. The top four are here in the Central Business District or the downtown. EG Olson is a property that is an office space currently. There are contaminants to the soil. It's due to a previous heating oil leak and underground storage tank. This is at the northeast corner, basically, of Bridgeport and Gravelly Lake Drive. And then you all are aware of the Chevron Site there on Gravelly Lake Drive and Alpharetta, which has soil contamination. And the contaminants are petroleum, as you might imagine, metals, arsenic, solvents. Their VCP was terminated. However, they're currently working with PLIA and an alternate way to clean up the property. They've installed wells and been doing monitoring now for a little over a year. Ken's Tire is also on the site. And that one is at Mount Tacoma in Gravelly Lake Drive. This site has petroleum metals, arsenic, and so forth. The building has been demolished. However, the property site is awaiting cleanup. And then the fourth item is Lakewood Town Center. That basically, it's main and 59th, but it's basically over by the RPAI offices, which is across from the AMC. And that is due to a previous, also a dry cleaner that was on the site many, many years ago, petroleum solvents and so forth. There is confirmed groundwater contamination at that site. Their VCP was terminated. And so right now, that site is still awaiting further cleanup. And then moving on to the next eight sites on the list, which are in the Lakewood Station District area. Line B is a vacant parcel or property that is a part of hospitality group in front of the Holiday Inn. That one is awaiting cleanup. There is suspected soil contamination due to a previous user. And then the next two sites, Quang and Lakeview Auto are both part of the Sounder Station. So there is continuing to be some soil contamination and potential groundwater contamination due to petroleum, as well as metals and so forth. Both of those sites have terminated their VCP. No further actions have been done. However, the site, as I mentioned, is the Sounder Station. And so there's no really disturbance of the grounds, but we do are concerned about potential groundwater contamination. Taiy Cleaners is probably one of the highest ranked in terms of hazards. It's a dry cleaner that is kind of in behind where the former Cheers Building is. And that's at 4924115. That one, the VCP, was also terminated due to inactivity on the site. Unical 358 is on the corner of Bridgeport and Pacific Highway. It's a current gas station. And they are currently working with PLIA on cleaning up that site for both soil and groundwater contamination. And the Wash Dot Mile Post 126 is an east side in the Springbrook area right of way. Some petroleum and confirmed soil contamination. The Lakeview Wash Dot Site is part of the Lakewood Landing redevelopment. That one also has some soil contamination. And I will mention that any site that is part of the UST or petroleum that's managed by the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department has to have some kind of minimum. You know, they have to address the contamination at least to a minimum. And so, but they're unfortunately, even though they do monitor those and remind the owners they need to clean up and do sometimes put forth monetary penalties. That's not typically enough to get those sites cleaned up in in a very fast manner. So sometimes they need a little bit more encouragement. The next two sites are both in the Woodbrook area. Bob's Moma Home Park is a site that had previous septic tank contamination from a illegal meth lab that was there many years ago. That one is currently on a voluntary cleanup program. The PSC Transformer is part of the Phoenix Capital Warehouse Project. And that is a 400,000 square foot redevelopment. That is awaiting cleanup. There is soil and groundwater contamination. So that will need to be addressed during the redevelopment effort. And then Tillicum, there is one site on Berkeley, which is actually part of the JBLM Congestion Relief Project redevelopment. There was some minimum cleanup done. However, there's additional cleanup that needs to be performed. And then moving into the rest of the items here. Al's Auto or Cairo now on Stillicum. There is continued contamination to the soil and suspected groundwater contamination. This one also had their VCP terminated due to inactivity. BNSF right of way. There's multiple areas that this one occurs. And then they have also confirmed soil contamination. This one is awaiting cleanup. The BP 11258 at 10302 South Come Away and 100th. There is soil and groundwater contamination. And then the next one on the list, Blue Tick, which is one that was recently or fairly recently discovered in 2017. This is on Durango. There is a truck parking lot and there was a spill that occurred. They have joined the VCP. There was some CSRT action on this property. And they're working with both the city and Department of Ecology and the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department to get that cleaned up. Dirk's Auto Repair, 110th, on 110th. Their VCP also expired. There is suspected soil and groundwater contamination. However, we don't, not enough investigation has been made yet to know exactly. And then Gaze Northwest Bakery, also on Durango, has both confirmed groundwater and soil contamination. Their VCP is also expired. The next item, Lakes Auto Salvage, is a very active project that we have right now on 4034100. It does have confirmed soil and groundwater contamination. This is the only site that we currently have that has what's called active institutional controls in place. The city is working with the Department of Ecology very closely because the owner is looking at some redevelopment. They are doing some landscaping. They really want to clean up the property and make it look very nice. They also want to add another structure and eventually convert an existing building perhaps to a group hub. And so the staff has been working very closely with Ecology as well as others to ensure that this gets cleaned up. We're waiting for them to submit for a pre-application permit in order to look at the building they want to construct and further redevelopment on that property. Lakeview Gravel Pit. We have a warehouse project in that area. However, there is considerable contamination. That property is owned by Pierce County. They're hoping to sell it to developer. The developer is proposing 600,000 square foot. However, right now is that it stands, we're not able to get to that level. And so we are working with them. The owner has, or Pierce County is currently on VCP and working on getting that cleaned up. We mentioned the Ponder's Superfund Site. Remediation has been completed and Lakewood Water has installed equipment and is monitoring and working on cleaning that up or further cleaning and ensuring that the water, groundwater is, remains healthy and clean for consumption. Next item, landscaping by Pat Bee. That one actually has reached an NFA, but it has not yet been removed from the list. As you'll probably notice, there are, there's some lag time in getting these updated as well as working with different agencies to coordinate getting those properties cleaned up. Mutual Materials has confirmed soil contamination. And that one is awaiting cleanup. And Ponder's Auto, which is on Pack Highway. Also, this one is awaiting cleanup. The only thing that we've seen that's really been done is an inspection in 1996. They're doing very minimal cleanup on that site. The Pick and Pull, which is Clear Zone adjacent. There's both soil and groundwater contamination on that. And Swan Properties, the next item. We do have a multifamily project on that site, 8920 Gravelly. It has been remediated. They are working with PLIA and the city. And we expect to get an NFA soon on that project. But we also are working with them because there is contamination in the right of way, which the city owns. So we want to ensure that the liability is not put onto the city going forward. So lots of work with our, pardon me, our attorney on that, our attorneys and outside counsel on that project. Tacoma Dry Cleaners. That one on Custer. We have a tenant improvement company called Beyond Smoothie that is looking to go into that site. It does have soil contamination and groundwater. We're working with them mostly on air quality. So we want to make sure not to disturb the, when we do that tenant improvement, make sure that all the folks that are in there working on the property as well as the, those that will be patrons of the the restaurant are protected. And so we're working with them. I think we're getting close. And so building as well as current planning are working very closely with that tenant. Texaco 7717 Bridgeport. That one is the Sound Credit Union out there on the corner of Custer and Bridgeport. There is confirmed soil and groundwater contamination. The company obviously was allowed to build with that, making sure that they didn't disturb that when they did. However, there still remains some contamination on the site. And then Woodworth Gravel Pit. That one is in the air corridor, Clear Zone adjacent. They are on a voluntary cleanup program. They have both soil and groundwater contamination. And then the next item, Wash Dot, another right of way on Bridgeport. And that one also has soil and groundwater contamination. The next two are the Clover Park Hanger, which is a historic exhibit on the Clover Park Technical College campus. That one has arsenic, halogenated organics, metals, and so forth, and confirmed soil and groundwater contamination. And then Building 25 on the campus also has some contamination. They've remediated the soil, but there continues to be groundwater contamination. And then the final one is our only residential property that we have on here, which is a property that's owned by Lhasa on Hipkins. And there's petroleum likely due to auto repairs from the past. Okay, so now there is a map. If you want to access that online. Four of the properties that I've talked about are not on that list due to a lag in coordination with the agencies. However, you know, hopefully, they will get that updated at some point. And these sites are either, Ecology has noted them as either cleanup started in yellow or awaiting cleanup in red. And then the one green side is the Superfund Site that is being monitored by operations and maintenance through the federal government. These are the 18 sites that have been cleaned up. And then it shows the status, site status, which is no further action and the date that they reached that status. And then let's see, okay, so the cleanup process. There's lots of variables that go in to the cleanup process. I did want to mention, I think I noted that earlier, that all sites that have some type of UST or petroleum product that has contaminated the site, it's required to do some type of minimum cleanup. But as I mentioned, it's very difficult to get these done unless there is some type of sale or redevelopment on the property. So what we could typically do as a local government official, myself or others, identify a site for redevelopment and then contact the property owner, of course, to encourage them to clean it up and enroll in a VCP. As I mentioned, owners may also work with PLIA as an alternative. They have an agreement with Ecology for reporting requirements in order to get those properties to an NFA. We can act as a liaison between the property owner and the agencies. Ecology does have a policy generally that in order to get to NFA, the site must have four quarters of contaminants below cleanup level and also decreasing contamination over those four quarters in order to get to the NFA. If you can't find the owner or if the taxes are delinquent, the property could be repossessed. If it's a public nuisance, we could abate the property and recover the cost, something similar to what we do with the dangerous building and nuisance abatements already. We can also issue warnings and citations with monetary penalties. Okay, so funding. Private property owners are not eligible for grants. City can apply for grants if they are the property owner or have intent to purchase the property. City is providing support and working with Lakewood Water District on Safe Drinking Water Grant. But I'll talk a little bit more in a moment. The State Department of Commerce does offer revolving loan fund, which private owners can apply for. And just want to mention that liability for brownfields not only fall to the current owner, but also previous owners could be liable. So, and then also, the city is obligated to ensure that any redevelopment or reuse complies with environmental requirements. Okay, so the city is obligated, as I mentioned, to regulate those reuse projects, TIs redevelopment, change of use. Also, stormwater compliance officers, namely Diana Hallar, goes out whenever there's a hazardous spill and works with the agencies and the property owners to get those spills cleaned up. Pardon me, what the city currently is doing. We are currently, as you see, we are updating the sites, working with the various agencies to prioritize the Lakewood sites, working on any hazardous spills that occur. Code enforcement will issue citations. And they work closely with our housing program manager as well as the building official to ensure that those sites are, if there's any code enforcement required, that that we're aware of that. We also monitor their regulating sites for redevelopment, as I mentioned, and working with the property owner and the representatives on those site redevelopments. So what else can we legally do with these sites? The city can do any of the following listed there. We can identify and publish the problem properties on the website, city website. We can issue warnings to the property owner. We can issue civil citations with monetary penalties for the property owner. And we can abate dangerous and nuisance conditions on the property, recovering the cost from the owner. So all actions are based on the city police powers granted by the state of Washington. In the Constitution, I've noted below the chapters related to that, both for the RCWs for Washington State as well as the city code as related to dangerous and unfit buildings, international codes, public nuisances, health and safety, junk vehicles, and nuisance vehicles. A little bit more on the Lakewood Water District site. So it's called the Ponder's Well Field Treatment Site. And as I mentioned, it's on the east side of I-5. You may have noticed it on New York Avenue. This is a photo of the equipment installed. About a year and a half ago, those blue towers were installed in the final element of this treatment center. There are activated carbon filtration vessels. And this is to filter and remove the PFAs. Governor Inslee also has in his budget for another site, which is called the Scott's Well Field Filtration Project, $4.5 million in funding to support this project. And the city of Lakewood is working with Lakewood Water District to possibly secure an additional $5.5 million through the Commerce's Defense Compatibility Program. And then before we get into the next steps, I just wanted to briefly talk to you a little bit about what we've got here on the spreadsheet. So as I mentioned, it is on the city website. Hopefully, I mentioned that, but it is on the city website on the economic development under data. And it's at the bottom under other documents. So you can find the contaminated sites list that you see here. And what we've done is attempted to look at the sites and rank them in looking at, you know, how likely are they to be cleaned up and potentially be for redevelopment? So we, of course, have the address, the current lad use, the description of the contaminant, as well as where they're located, and the parcel number, zoning census tract, whether or not they're occupied, who the current owner is, and potential who the current owner is and potential responsible parties for the the property and the square footage. We've also added the assessed land value as well as the approved value and the total assessed value. And then if improved value is 50% or less, that property is more likely to have a potential for redevelopment. You know, zero just means that the property is vacant. We also identified whether or not the property has a current redevelopment project pending or in process. And then we looked at the cleanup status and those acronyms or letters are identified to the right. So awaiting cleanup is A C, owner started cleanup O C. So if we know that there is some significant activity going, we put O C on there. V C P, of course, is the voluntary cleanup program. T means that the V C P was terminated and F S is the federally supervised property. Then we also identified who the site manager is. So is it ecology? Is it, you know, who actually manages that? Some of it is managed by CLEA. And then if there's active institutional controls, and as I mentioned, the the auto former auto recon site on 100th is the only one that we currently have active institutional controls on. If the no further action has been received, if there's a C S R T action pending, then what we feel is a redevelopment potential rating. So it's a bit subjective by staff, looking at the properties. What is the potential that we might see a redevelopment project? Is it a conforming use and an overall rating that we placed on the site? And then the categories and points that we've given to those different sites are listed on the right as well. And then going back to to wrap up this presentation, recommendations and next steps. We have, of course, updating the sites, continuing to evaluate the sites, including the analysis and looking at liability based on historical records and reporting. Also updating the site access authorization. The city can work with the property owners and ecology to get access to those sites. Inform and work with Tacoma Pierce County Health Department on those petroleum base or other hazardous oils, kerosene, those sites that have the U S Ts or previously had U S Ts primarily if they are particularly if they have been leaking. Prioritize the sites that are in the target areas for redevelopment is what we've done. And also that are most easily pushed toward N F A designation. And then also from here, based on what we know, develop recommended strategies moving forward. And then secure the services of a specialized legal firm that typically a boutique legal firm that might be able to help us further get these cleaned up. And then with that, that ends my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Ms. Newton. Mr. Whalen.
Thank you, Ms. Newton, for the thorough report. And I think identifying the properties and getting them coalesced in one document is really part of the first part of the battle, right? So my my question to you is, based on the the prior few years we've been working on this, what has been your experience as to the city's involvement in any of them and moving the needle forward to redevelopment? Where have you found the gaps in our tools or in the exercise of adequate tools?
Well, the first part of your question. So what what I've done besides kind of looking at the properties is to talk with the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department and try and ecology to try to prioritize our sites and see if they might put a little bit more activity and tried to get them cleaned up.
Right.
And and so, you know, the thing that I think that our code allows us to, you know, put a little bit more pressure on those sites and property owners to get those cleaned up. So I think we have the tools that we need. It's just, you know, you know, there's a lot of variables, as I mentioned, one being, you know, staff, where do we want to put our resources? And, you know, actions into. So I think that the gap is just having a way to really encourage them to get those sites cleaned up. Yeah, particularly if they have groundwater contamination.
Right.
Yeah.
Do we have a good example in the last five years where city pressure has encouraged a property owner to clean up a site?
I would say it's a combination and I mostly, you know, for example, the Lakeview gravel pit, let's take that as an example, which is the Pierce County site. And so that's, I would say that that if the projects that we've had that are redevelopment or proposed redevelopment are the ones that we put more pressure on. So as an example, that one is now on the V C P. So they are in the voluntary cleanup program, working towards getting that cleaned up so that they can do the redevelopment.
Okay, and who owns that? Is that the county still or no?
Yeah, county, county.
That's good pressure to put, I guess. You know, on the flip side of the card, for those that are actually working toward redevelopment, my hope is that we are being instructive and in a coaching mode. I'm thinking about, you know, Micah Glassditter's property on 100th where they're redeveloping that area. And I think contrary to the site, I think they do have a no further action letter on the overall site. I think it's subject to a restrictive covenant that's been recorded against the site, which impacts what they can do or can't do with the cap, which is the gravel area. So it becomes incumbent upon us to be a cheerleader as best we can, working with the property owner in their efforts with ecology to do what they can to redevelop appropriately, obviously, so.
Yes.
To me, that's one of the best things we can do is to do what you're doing, obviously, but be a cheerleader to be helpful, but also be a nudger to get those that are recalcitrant and clean up their properties to get them cleaned up.
So, Mr. Whalen, I was just going to mention that our current planning manager, as well as our building official, myself, have done that and so we will continue to do that. We're waiting for them to apply for a pre-op for the new building. And we will be working with them very closely.
Yeah, because it could be a good success story for that property as well as for another small business in Lakewood that wants to do something creative and positive. So that's, that would be great.
Mr. Bransdeter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, same as Newton. You know, a lot of information in your presentation. And I had a couple of things, if you could clarify for me. The voluntary cleanup program is when a property owner enters into some sort of an arrangement. And then they have the lead and to actually do the cleanup actions that are prescribed or necessary.
Yeah, Mr. Bransdeter, yes, so V C P program is through the Department of Ecology. So they decide, they sign an agreement with the Department of Ecology to clean up the property and they have certain milestones that they need to meet every quarter, every year, and then reporting that is required. If they do not meet it, then they're terminated from that program.
So there are quite a few properties that say V C P expired. Is that what happens when ecology has terminated them from the program?
Yes, Mr. Bransdeter, that's correct.
So then what's the next step taken by ecology after that?
Ecology will at some point send a letter and just asking them to, you know, clean up the site. If the site has, but there's no real requirement from that standpoint. If they're not on a V C P. On the other hand, if the site has a U S T, so some type of petroleum or other chemical from a U S T, heating oil so forth, then the Health Department will do enforcement on all of those sites. But I would say that it's very minimum. So yearly, they're just required to do something minimal to show that they are progressing. But it, those are really the actions that are taken.
Okay. Your your list of sites didn't include any city properties other than American Lakes North Park, which was a complete on the completed list. And then it's essentially it's no longer that way. But do we have any rights of way that are adjacent to any of these properties? That are likely to have problems at a time when we would do a transportation improvement or something of that nature?
Mr. Bransdeter, yes, likely that we will run into that at some point. As I mentioned, the, well, the Swan property, there is right of way that is contaminated that we're aware of, and that is a redevelopment project. And Wash Dot has right of way also that is where we're aware that has contamination. And so there is a likelihood that at some point in the future, we'll discover more sites that could have right of way contamination.
Okay. And when you spoke of actions that the city's code allows it to do, you showed us the publishing the list on the on the website, you showed us that. But in terms of actually issuing civil citations or doing abatements, have we actually done any of those recently? Or what does it take to get to one of those two steps?
No, Mr. Bransdeter, there are none that I'm aware of. I know there are two properties that C S R T is working with. And I don't know the extent of any penalties that have been issued. That's the Blue Tick site and also the Swan property site that I mentioned. And then as far as the city issuing, pardon me, citations with regards specifically to the contaminated sites, I'm not aware of that being done. And then what, going forward, I think it would be something that, you know, the city will have to decide on what level that we want to enforce this going forward. Do we want to implement more actions from our code enforcement C S R T? And you could perhaps develop an ordinance for properties in Lakewood to show what we are going to enforce going forward. So there's, there's a little bit more work to do on that. Ms. Ms. Walker, did you have?
Are you saying that while we have tools, the decision to use them is a policy decision that the city hasn't actually prioritized yet? So, 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 so if the council wanted to prioritize doing that, like, say, at least for the properties in the downtown or in the areas where we have some subarea plans, what kind of collection would it take to prioritize doing that? Would it be a budgetary thing of putting something in the budget to 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 do that or does it? How would you envision moving from where we are of reluctant to do that? And I'll use that term to prioritizing doing that in certain areas of the city?
Councilmember Bransdeter or members of the council, the same people that are enforcing on the other abatements and nuisances in the city are the people that you're asking to prioritize this. It doesn't take an additional legislative act on your part. It takes, as you've indicated, prioritization. And so just understand that these have a little more to them than a typical nuisance or abatement. And as you've heard in the prior nuisance and abatement presentations, those can take on a life of their own in some ways, they take a lot of persistence and these particular breed of nuisances and abatements are even more so. And so it's not something that we can't do, but it is something that will require extra attention and prioritizing over some of the other nuisances and abatements that you have also cared a lot about. So it's just, it's just a matter of which ones we pick first.
I understand, and I guess my last question, and maybe it's for the city attorney. You mentioned several times about the city is working, but also evaluating is to not step into liability issues. What sort of things would put the city in a liability issue?
The main concern would be if we are specifically targeting for reasons other than safety, quality of neighborhood, things like that. If someone believes, as sometimes people do, even if we don't agree with them, if they believe they've been targeted for an inappropriate reason, and they always do feel picked upon when we enforce, we would need to be prepared to defend on that. And so when we make our prioritized lists, we can reprioritize, that's not an issue. But if we are reprioritizing every time one of the wheels squeaks, number one, that's not very effective. But number two, people can start to ask how certain properties are at the top of the list. Now here, you've clearly articulated a goal of getting the downtown in a certain kind of order. So that's, that's probably not something we would have trouble defending.
Thank you, Ms. Newton, Ms. Walker, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
And thank you. And for for Mr. Bransdeter, I would note that there's a difference between the state right of ways and most city and county right of ways. The state that Wash Dot buys its property. Generally, the adjoining property owners actually own the feed dirt under a street to the middle. And so that mitigates cities' potential for liability. Ms. Moss.
Mr. Mayor. Ms. Newton, thank you for the report. I was just curious during your research and the testing, was there any contaminants found from based on the the smelter or the it was the the smelter that blew here in Tacoma? Was there any contaminants found in the ground from that?
Yes, Ms. Moss, there has been. Over the years, there's been a lot of fill that has been brought in, some of which has been contaminated, unfortunately. So there has, there is definitely, we do have that existing in Lakewood. Yes, that is definitely something that we look at.
Thank you.
So Becky, do we have? Have we identified any of these properties where the property owners effectively abandoned it? It might still be paying property taxes, but the property really isn't of value to them. And so they've, they're just totally ignoring it, letting it sit stagnant.
And, Mr. Mayor, not yet. However, we'll, we'll be doing a little bit more analysis and we can take a look and see if there's actually property. see if there's actually properties that have been abandoned. I would say also, having said that, that obviously there's properties that have been sold to new property owners and not only are, is the new property owner liable, but potentially those who had contaminated from this, from previously and sold their properties could be also liable going forward. So we may uncover that going forward.
Any other questions for Ms. Newton? Going once. Well, thank you. It's very, oh, Mr. Coffield.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson, and good evening, council. Kind of getting back to Councilmember Branstad's question. So is there any direction that the council would like to give us? My understanding is that, you know, the council's direction to me was to focus on the downtown properties. And I'd like to verify if that's still the case. And if it is, we will make those properties our priority and focus on those first and foremost. Thank you, Mayor.
Well, personally, I'd like to see a kind of a cost benefit analysis before we move forward on anything. And, you know, if, if it's a small cost and there's a significant benefit to be derived, that's a lot different than the inverse of that. So I, I don't think it can be uniformly applied as far as a goal. We need to pick and choose.
I would concur with, yeah, I would concur with that, Mayor, because each, you know, while this, while this issue might be the same across each property, they're all different in their own unique and special way. So let, let us do that with a focus on, on the downtown properties and, and then we'll, we'll come back to and kind of take this in, in bits and pieces.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, in light of that, Mr. Coffield, I guess I'm confused in my own mind, what we would actually do other than provide information and be a resource, right?
That's correct, Deputy Mayor, but we can also, there is enforcement action that we can, we can take as well. Also, Deputy Mayor, getting back to Councilmember Branstad's question regarding, you know, some of, some of these pollutants, you know, coming into the public right of way, we do know up at where Gravel Lake Drive and Silicon Boulevard comes together, there most likely is a plume in the roadway. We did not create that plume. But that plume needs to be addressed by somebody. And again, that would be part of, you know, the analysis that we would need to undertake and how to resolve that issue. So not only do you have the cleanup of the property, but then to what extent is it having, is it having on public property? You know, potentially the same could be said for the property at, you know, the former Ken's Tires property. Who knows where that plume has gone? That could have gone on to the adjacent private property owners. It could be in the public right of way. Who knows?
I mean, it raises, you raise an interesting question about, and I don't know, maybe Heidi would know if there's history, this of cities taking action against neighboring property owners based upon, you know, phase one or phase two, seeking declaratory relief that those property owners proceed with cleanup activities sooner than later. I mean, is there history of that in our?
Deputy Mayor, in, in the city of Lakewood, there's not a history of that. I think it's fair to say that the city had a sufficient list of abatements and nuisances from incorporation that these appeared complex, that we were picking low hanging fruit for quite a long time. You can see we've been extraordinarily successful that. Part of us getting to this discussion now is a reflect how well we've done with the low hanging fruit, right?
Well, I love low hanging fruit, but.
Yeah. We don't have that track record in the city, but we aren't the first city in the state either. And so we could certainly look around and see if there's been success elsewhere. That you're not going to see every city doing this with great.
It's not the low hanging fruit, it's the tough tangerine, right?
Yes, exactly.
You know, it's a question, maybe it's an MSRC thing, whether cities have successfully sued adjacent property owners under deck action, especially like John's indicated, if there's a plume or residual contamination that gets into the public right of way, that might prompt the property owner then to do the third party action against the insurers upstream to force something to happen. So that's, that's the only way something happens is someone scrambling to find insurance coverage, right? I mean, that's.
That's correct. Yeah. And I think, I think Deputy Mayor, the last thing we want is to actually be on, in court on this. And, you know, my thirty plus year career, I've only, believe it or not, I've only been involved in two of these. And they took, and each one of them took an incredible amount of time. And actually, one of them, one of them is still going through the cleanup process because of, because of how polluted it is. Here's the good news. Here's the, here's the good news. The good news is that there are low hanging fruit ones. For example, former gas stations, the, the contamination on those properties tend to be isolated within the boundaries of that property. The ones where you get the plumes are dry cleaners and then formal auto repair shops where they were just dumping oil and other contaminants right into, right into the ground. But here's the deal. By going through the process, we can get it done. And certainly the threat of litigation always helps. But really what it entails is helping that private property owner, even though we might initially be on a kind of a not so positive relationship to get this, is going back and tracking down who the ultimate insurance provider was. And to get them to stand up and actually pay for the relief that's needed on the property.
Yeah, well, certainly, for sure. Sometimes it does take litigation. I'm just trying to ensure always that there's value to lawyers, John.
No, 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 I'm just, no, actually Deputy Mayor, I'm saying the opposite. I'm saying, you know, using the, not going to, because I think once you get into litigation, it just ends. Then you end up, you just end up in court and briefs being filed in perpetuity. But, but I do believe that you can get to a place to work collaboratively with that property owner to get the issue resolved. I really, I really do. And, you know, use Ken's Tires as an example. We, we know that is a highly polluted property. And right now, you know, we haven't talked to the property owners, but I'll tell you, based on the value of that property, there's no way they have the ability to clean that property up. However, if we were to work with them and to do the research and find out, you know, okay, who really is a stakeholder here, i.e. insurance providers and the like, you know, who knows what can happen? That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying.
I just, and logistically, just trying to figure out how we would help do that without really stepping into their business in the absence of, that's why litigation gets forced, right? I'm not encouraging you to do it, but I'm just saying that's what, that's the triggering mechanism whereby people do formal discovery and find out who are potentially responsible parties, that kind of thing. So.
I think the manager has suggested in the past, when we've had conversations about this, that there are some folks who truly specialize in this area.
Right, that might be it, yeah.
Know how to divine for the sources of the money. And so if we got to the point where this was a priority, there would be a resource allocation need to get that, those services. But it is something that if it's truly the priority for the, at this time, among all the other competing priorities.
Yeah, it's, it's not us.
Good sense. If you can find, if you guys can identify a couple of folks to give an RFP on what kind of services they could provide a city like us?
I remember years ago, Deputy Mayor, I worked with this boutique environmental services law firm, they were over in Gay Harbor. I don't know if they're still around, but I will just say personally, I learned so much about this process from that, from that firm. But, but it can be done. It just, you know, I just need to know from this body, if you want to make this a priority, you know, we can, we can make it happen. But, but please note, this isn't even a marathon. It's longer than a marathon. It's, it's a long, long drawn out process to get these issues resolved.
It's an ultra, an ultra marathon.
Ultra marathon, yeah.
You know, this, sitting through any number of super fund meetings, as a young lawyer convinced me not to go into that area of practice, went to this new partner and told them I wasn't going to do it anymore. And it can go on twenty years.
Yeah.
Lawyers make money and the consultants make money, and they could have cleaned up the place four times over with the money that was spent on the process, pointing fingers at other people and bringing in parties and letting parties go. And it, so that's why I go back to the cost benefit analysis. If there's, if there's, if there's a, a functionally abandoned gas station on a corner that is making it less attractive for people around it to develop, code enforcing, abating, cleaning and selling is much, much faster and cheaper than going into litigation on a couple hundred thousand dollar property where the litigation is going to cost five times what the properties were. So it's a pick and choose type of thing. That's, I guess, my, my point. I think there are things that, probably things out there where it'd be worthwhile pursuing, but there are other ones that are just going to be pouring money down an oil hole.
No pun intended.
Yeah, not so slick.
Oh, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Branstad.
I, I, I do think that, you know, that the cost benefit analysis as a first step, particularly with respect to those properties that are in the downtown where we were really hoping to see mixed use development, like the Severn Station on Gravel Lake Drive and, and such. You know, is something worth looking into. And if that has some, some other highly developable, but low hanging fruit elsewhere to do that analysis on, to do that. But sure be nice to get identify a test case that fits our priorities that we think we can manage through the tools that we have. If only both to get it done and also to set an example that we're serious to property owners throughout the city that have these types of property.
Any other questions for Ms. Newton? Well, quite a detailed analysis. Thanks for all your hard work. And we know where, where the dirt is.
You're welcome.
Yeah.
Not sure what to do with it. So thanks again. We'll move on to a review of fiscal year 2021 annual action plan with Mr. Gumm.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of the council. Tonight I wanted to accomplish three things. Some of it will be a little bit of a review. You, you've all have kind of seen these things and heard the funds coming down the pipe, but I wanted to review some of the housing related assistance programs that are kind of out there right now, available to Lakewood citizens and ones that I know are coming online soon. Also wanted to go through a very quick update on the American Rescue Plan. As, as you're all aware, that's something that council is reviewing this coming weekend, so I won't go into great detail, but just kind of relate it to the CDBG program. And then I wanted to go into the 2021 CDBG Annual Action Plan. It, there, it includes three amendments, years 2017, 2019, and 2020. So with that, as most of you are aware, there's, there's a, a large amount of funds kind of floating around out there, both from the federal government, the state, local governments. A lot of it is related to rental housing, rental assistance, mortgage assistance, utility assistance, and there's all kinds of, of funds coming down. And all of those are kind of important to weigh how they're going to be used, what they're, what they can be used for, as and how that's going to relate to the 2021 Annual Action Plan. So we don't kind of duplicate a bunch of services and, and try and hit different things with the Annual Action Plan. So one of the, the big things that's out there right now, Pierce County, on March 10th, started their rental housing assistance program. So people that are behind on rent, there's $58.6 million available to Lakewood residents, Pierce County residents. Those are all through US Treasury and state funds that they've received directly. There's, there's also programs that Tacoma is offering. Granted, they're only available to Tacoma residents, but I think it's, it's important to note that Tacoma is offering $2 million in rental assistance through LASSA, as well as $4.5 million in utility assistance. So Tacoma is kind of hitting those programs pretty heavy as well. The county is also working on some mortgage assistance programs. They've got a, a plan to allocate approximately, these numbers aren't, aren't done yet because they're still working on them, about 2.25 million in CDBG CV funds. And they're looking to do somewhere around a million dollars in American Rescue Plan funds for mortgage assistance. So the county's got some, some additional programs coming out. Some of the things that, that we have done here at the city of Lakewood recently, as, as you're all aware, council approved last year to spend $148,464 in home tenant based rental assistance funds. Those funds have primarily been allocated to clients. We're waiting on some paperwork from some of them to come in, but realistically, we're looking at about a 90% expenditure rate on those funds right now with committed clients. And we do anticipate the, the last little bit of those funds to get moved pretty quickly as well. Another thing that council approved very recently in February, as you all remember, $703,426 was allocated in CDBG CV1 and CV3 funds. Those are for a rental and mortgage assistance program. That's got a $4,000 cap with a six month limit on assistance. Another program, I attended a webinar on today, the state is looking to pass through some of its CDBG CV2 funds. So we will have the trifecta of CB funds. Lakewood would be an allocation of $136,706. Those funds are looking to come online sometime in May. Our application deadline is April 30th, and then the expenditure deadline for that would be two years. So we could do additional things with those rental housing assistance programs, any type of housing program, anything that, that is a CDBG eligible activity is, is what we could expend those funds on. So there's, there's a, another little pool of funds coming to the Lakewood Council for review. Some of the other things that I think are kind of important in the 1.9 trillion American Rescue Plan Act, the act does include $5 billion in home funds. What that means to Lakewood is an additional allocation of 3.7 times our home allocation. So right now, our home allocation is just in excess of $300,000. So we would be looking at about $1.2 million in home funds coming to the city of Lakewood. Tacoma would take a 10% admin cap, so we'd be looking at about $1.1 million to spend. There would be a four year expenditure deadline, and those home funds could be used for affordable housing things, so like development of affordable housing. They've also allowed, which is kind of a, a good thing, they've, they've allowed congregate or non-congregate type shelter programs. So if the city wanted to allocate those funds to a shelter program, that would be something that we could do. The, the ARPA does include a whole bunch of other different funds. I mean, there's, there's funds that will be coming down through the state that, that'll trickle through. There's 1.2 million in home funds, sorry, 10, 21.6 billion, there we go, in funding for rental assistance. There's another 10 billion for mortgage assistance, 4.5 billion for utility assistance, 100. So there's this kind of broad encompassing pool of funds that'll slowly trickle through down to local jurisdictions. So we do anticipate there's going to be another big kind of funding come through. Another thing that, that we are looking forward to, that the spear will go through with this weekend, is the, the funds that are coming through the state. And we, we do anticipate about $14 million somewhere in that ballpark. And it, it does have a, a large number of things that can be spent on. There's four major categories that it can be expended on. There's a, about a four year expenditure deadline. And those, again, it's, I believe then in the last meeting, the mayor kind of, I'll steal his line, we're, we're reaching a, a critical mass at some point in time. I mean, there's so much money floating out there. I'm not certain if we're in front of the need yet, or if we've even determined the need yet, but, but there is a, a large, large number of resources devoted to rental housing. large number of resources devoted to rental housing, um business assistance and mortgage assistance. So at some point in time, I'm I'm kind of in the boat that it'd be nice to kind of see what the actual need is before we just keep allocating monies to something that it's kind of a kind of an ethereal thing out there. Nobody really knows what the actual numbers are. We do know there are a number of people hurting in Lakewood. Um, and we do know that there are a number of people that need assistance. It's it's just kind of hard to put your finger on that moving target right now. Another thing that I wanted to point out on page eighteen of the council agenda packet, I was going through and I found some information, re- relatively current information on um renters who are behind on rent. And this this is a national poll. Um, and it it was through, what, February seventeenth through March first? So it's a US Census data poll. And I thought it was kind of interesting because you've got one in five households roughly nineteen percent behind on rent, but what stood out um in this thing was the black, non Latino households. There thirty three percent of those households reported that they're not current on rent. So you've got a a serious disproportionate hit to African American households that that white households are not seeing. We're white households at the bottom, we're seeing a thirteen percent um behind on rent. So it's nearly triple in African American households, something to kind of be aware of. Um, as as we move forward, um, City of Lakewood staff is coordinating pretty closely with the county as well as Tacoma. I mean, a lot of our funds come through, the home funds come through the city of Tacoma, so we're we're pretty tightly tied to start with. Um, but we have been working with the county to to kind of track what they're doing because all of those funds are available to Lakewood citizens, so trying not to, again, do too many things that are competing with each other. So we have been working together and will continue to do so. Uh, moving into the twenty twenty one act Annual Action Plan. Um, this is specifically for the Annual Action Plan that would start on July first, twenty twenty one. It would run through June thirtieth of twenty twenty two. Um, we recently had, there was a a public hearing we had on February, did we have it, February tenth? It was wasn't largely attended, but there was six individuals that were there. There was a a lot of good comments that we received um about the needs for housing in the city of Lakewood, um both permanent um shelter, affordable. Um, there was kind of a gamut of of things that they identified that uh the city could use. Um, some of them were rental assistance, some of it was mortgage assistance, business assistance, kind of, kind of what you would expect to see. Um, I also presented this to the twenty twenty one Annual Action Plan to the citizens of Citizens Advisory Board um on March seventeenth. Uh, we reviewed it. They actually had some pretty good comments, uh pretty positive comments about the plan and the proposed use of funds. Um, they had some questions uh as most people do about what's the need out there for housing assistance and rental assistance and so forth. So um moving into the uh actual funding here, the CDBG for twenty twenty one, uh we're looking at a Lakewood allocation of five hundred and seventy three thousand three hundred and fifty two dollars. It's about the same as it was last year. It's about a three point eight percent reduction. Um, home funds, the city is looking at three hundred and twenty one thousand seven hundred and thirty dollars. Um, that's again, it's a slight reduction, about three percent. Um, the the Annual Action Plan is would pretty much address all the categories that this the five year consolidated plan has addressed as priorities. So it would address priority um one, which would be housing instability among residents, including homeless. And it would address, number two would be limited supply of diverse um rental and homeownership opportunities. It would address the need for accessible culturally competent services. And finally, it would address the need for accessible homes and facilities. Um, so all of those categories um have some part in this Annual Action Plan. The on page twenty of your uh agenda packet, um tables one and table two cover the proposed use of funds. Um, there's five tables or five columns across this table. As it starts on the left would be the the CDBG allocation. As you move through the right, it goes to the total. So activities that are proposed to be funded um with CDBG in in this plan would be one would be housing major home repair program. The proposal would be to fund two hundred and sixty four thousand one hundred and six dollars and ninety two cents um with CDBG funds. The second thing would be to fund CDBG Administration of Home Housing Services. That would be funded at fifteen thousand dollars. Three would be Housing Emergency Assistance for Displaced Residents. Um, that would be funded at tw- twenty eight thousand seven hundred and eight dollars and seventy six cents. Um, as you can see, that's funded out of reprogrammed fiscal year two thousand seventeen CDBG. Um, basically what I'm proposing is is taking the exact same fund in two thousand seventeen and just rolling it to current. So we have a a two thousand seventeen CDBG um EADR allocation of that amount. It's it's getting kind of old. And it makes reporting kind of cumbersome in IDIS. It's after a couple, two, three years, if the funds aren't expended, it's easier to to roll them into the current funds um into IDIS and continue the activity. So that that's what that proposal would be. Public services would would be recommended to fund a housing foreco- housing foreclosure counseling um and fair housing program. That would be a funded recommendation of fifty thousand dollars. Um, and then finally, well, two things, infrastructure program. Um, as council approved, uh last week, we would be funding the sidewalk project at Phillips Road. So that would be funded with a hundred and twenty nine thousand five hundred and seventy four dollars and sixty eight cents with the twenty twenty one CDBG allocation and a hundred and seventy thousand four hundred and twenty five dollars and thirty two cents in reprogrammed two thousand and nineteen CDBG funds for a total of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, finally, administration would be funded at a hundred and fourteen thousand six hundred and seventy dollars and forty cents. Um, so that is the the breakdown. The other the other column that's in here is a fiscal year twenty twenty CDBG. There's a a bunch of zeros in there, but in the footnotes, what the uh amendment for twenty twenty would be, um, it would be reallocating ninety one dollars less admin twenty, but he participated, I think, a little bit too early. The allocation for CDBG and they said it was five hundred and ninety six thousand dollars, five hundred and ninety six thousand and six dollars. What it actually came out to be was five hundred and ninety five thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars. So we have a a correction of ninety one dollars to to rebalance our CDBG to what it actually was versus what HUD thought it was going to be. Um, and then table two would be the home allocation. Again, every year we've got ten percent that goes to the city of Tacoma for admin. Um, the other two hundred and eighty nine thousand five hundred and fifty seven dollars would go to an affordable housing fund. Um, that fund is specific to affordable housing development, things like uh homeownership center, Habitat, um Lhasa, any any projects that come along that are developing affordable housing. And finally, um, table three would be the the timeline moving forward. So the next step would be April first to April thirtieth. There's a thirty day comment period on the Annual Action Plan for citizens to provide input. Um, we would have a council public hearing on April nineteenth. The city of Tacoma is scheduling there. There's kind of concurrently, so they'll have an April thirteenth public hearing, uh May third. We would be back before council approving the Annual Action Plan. Um Tacoma does so on May eleventh and then submitting it to HUD on May fourteenth. So with that, does council have any questions?
Let's have one small one there, Mayor.
This helped. I get Ms. Boss had her hand up first here, so.
Just briefly, Mr. Gum, the African Americans, are they are are they not applying for these CDBG funds or they are not being approved?
I think it's most likely that they're not applying. Um, at least from what I've seen, some of the African American households are are more disadvantaged in transportation, um disadvantaged in their access to um infrastructure like computers and some of those things. So they're 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 already kind of at a disadvantaged position, so there's less of them applying than than probably there needs to be.
Is there a way that we can reach out to them? If you know of them.
Yeah, that that was that was the city's plan. Um, moving forward would be, especially with some of the housing counseling programs, would be to reach out to those communities of of color and and see what we can do to to assist them.
Yeah, and there's a lot of pride in that. That's why I was asking the question. There's a lot of pride in asking for help, so.
Yeah.
If we can help them out, I would like to see that happen. So thank you.
Yeah, good question.
I I would note that through the first round of rental assistance, uh the disparity in uh is mostly addressed in the amount of aid that goes out. Uh, the participation level because one of the correcting factors is the the disadvantaged communities of color generally are have a greater percentage of people who are qualified at eighty percent AMI, which is the cutoff for rental assistance. So some of it's self correcting and not necessarily all of theirs. There is active outreach in that regard, too. This is Mr. Wayland.
Thanks, Mr. Gum. It's a lot of work that you guys go through, much appreciated because it goes to people in need. So thank you for doing all of it. And the question I have, there's, I think I saw a figure of one point four million that that possibly might come our way for housing purposes with the uh COVID, the new round of whatever we call it, the one point nine trillion dollar sum. And so, you know, it's not a ton to do a a lot with, but it's certainly something. Uh, have you given thought yet to what might work well if that money does come our way, perhaps either helping Lhasa with its expansion or working to do something regionally to create some additional affordable housing projects?
Um, I have. Um, that's something that that myself and my counterparts in in Pierce County have discussed as well. Um, the county is looking to do long term investments. They're they're trying to get away from as much rental assistance and mortgage assistance and and kind of looking long term. So we had a conversation last week. Uh, we were going through housing trust fund applications and and we did discuss Lhasa and that's to for the city of Lakewood, um I believe that's a priority. Um, Lhasa is is looking to acquire additional property, kind of get the the last piece of the puzzle so they can develop on their lands. Um, and that would be something that that I would be in favor of supporting and I'm I'm pushing hard for um through the county in Tacoma. It could be something that we could all partner for because if if you're doing a a shelter program in Lakewood, we we would most likely be serving Pierce County and Lakewood and Tacoma residents. So yes, we are looking at that.
Very good. Well, keep up the good work. Thank you. I agree with you, longer term solutions other than just rental assistance is preferable.
Yeah.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, Mr. Gum, a couple of things. I guess we'll we'll end up talking about housing. Uh, or or more of the rental assistance stuff, I guess, on Saturday. Is that the plan?
I believe so. Options of funding, yes.
So I I I won't ask much about it, but I will ask, you you made mention there's a lot of money going towards rental assistance and mortgage assistance, but you, we don't even know the extent of the problem. I mean, there are some national numbers out there. So a couple of questions, uh, when do you think we will know? And two, does this go for the the rental assistance in there or go for the entire uh part of the act, which is the end of December of twenty twenty four? You mentioned two years. Is there, are are we on two different time schedules here?
Yeah, there just depends on which funding source you're looking at. So the the two years that I mentioned was for the the CV two funds. Those were allocated a while back. I think that was part of the the very last act under the previous president. So those those are on a two year cycle. The the current one point nine, that's yes, that would be on a four year cycle out to twenty twenty four or whatever it is, this end of December, I believe.
Okay, so on the major home repair sewer loan program, can you tell us roughly what the breakdown is between the sewer loan program and the major home repair?
Um, it's primarily major home repair. It's a it's a sewer loan program in the in the fact that we we do offer it. Um, we haven't had very many takers lately. Um, when we originally started that and combined the two programs, I I I don't remember the year exactly, about eight, seven or eight years ago, roughly, we had a a large number of of applicants at that point in time, but I think right now we have one applicant um that we're looking to do a a sewer connection for, so it's it's all but become a major home repair program again with very few sewer connections.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
I just know we can talk more about it on Saturday, but for example, one item I heard mentioned, the uh foreclosure counseling is probably going to be robustly uh implemented by uh the state and through different funding sources. And I think there's some in the federal act, too. So it it may be a just spitting in the wind if we spend money on such things like that. I think the latest estimate was that on rental assistance uh going forward, not what's already gone out, but there could be as much as a hundred and twenty million dollars coming to Pierce County. Not including any money that's directly allocated to the cities or the county. It's basically kind of a per capita distribution. So um there are definite holes that uh we we can aim at, and I I agree, long term is better than short term. Anything further? Council? Well, thank you, Mr. Gum. As always, you have attempted uh valiantly to make sense out of the government entanglement, kind of like fix.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Fixing Medusa's hair. But you do a great job of it. Thanks. Uh, so we'll move on to review a chapter nine oh six of Lakewood Municipal Code. Ms. Walker.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I'm Heidi Walker, your city attorney, and I believe joining me at some point here will be the chief of police. And the reason for that is that there's really two aspects to this. There's the enforcement aspect and there's the prosecution and processing aspect. Uh, in on page sixty five of your materials, you have an agenda bill or not an agenda bill, I'm sorry, memo from us, and then what follows is a proposed ordinance. And the purpose of the ordinance would be to sort of patch a hole that's been found in the state statute regarding possession of certain controlled substance substances. The Supreme Court found that because the knowledge element was missing, the intent element, that people were being convicted of possession of drugs without any intent to possess the drugs, and the Supreme Court found that to be unconstitutional. There was some expectation that the legislature would fix that, and so things would go back to the way they had been. Uh, we are hearing, and I believe that the city manager forwarded to you from our lobbyist, Breonna Taylor, that um that may not be happening. Um, there may be some other thoughts at the legislative level um that don't include uh repairing this tool for us. Um, on one of the pages, you'll see a table that's page sixty six of your materials. That table was provided by the chief of police and it indicates the volume that we're talking about of cases. And so that you're aware, in municipal court, we've never prosecuted these cases because we didn't have jurisdiction over drugs other than marijuana. And so um this would be something that's new for us. And the cases that have previously been prosecuted have gone to the county. The county is no doubt now trying to figure out what to do with the convictions they do have on the books. Um, we've made a recommendation that we might want to uh wait and see uh because of the lack of volume that we have of these cases, and there does seem to be a move afoot at the legislature towards preemption. There is a preemption argument already, a possibility. Um, different attorneys disagree on to what degree that would impact us. But that's what we've got for you. I'd be happy to try and answer any questions. Some of the questions you have may involve looking into the magic eight ball. And as you know, that's not always something that we are are very good at, but we'll try. And as you can see, the chief of police is here to address issues that are more sort of issues that are more sort of the on-the-ground, frontline kinds of uh questions.
Questions from Ms. Walker. So the uh I can understand the preemption argument if the statute as it existed were considered to be valid. But
Right.
it wa- it was essentially eliminated by the uh state Supreme Court in their divided opinion. So what in state law remains would preempt this? There's a federal that there are federal statutes which we can't prosecute uh involving the same offenses that the feds won't prosecute unless it's rather significant. And that doesn't preempt the state. So why would the state not having a law preempt us from having one?
Um, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, there's two components to my answer. One is my traditionally conservative, do we really want to find ourselves defending it at all? And that obviously the um is anytime somebody wants to take the city on, they can. And what they would hang their hat on is the preemption language that's built into state statute. You are correct, and you are following the line of thinking of the cities that are choosing to pursue adopting something. They're saying if the ordinance or the statute at state level went away, then the preemption doesn't apply anymore. If you read the preemption language, it seems to preempt the entire field of controlled substances. I don't know which argument would prevail on any given day. I can tell you that the sentiment that we're seeing generally, I don't know that it would hold on the bench, but you can see the sentiment coming out of the legislature in the mere fact that they haven't patched this hole up right away. This is an easy fix. All they have to do is vote to put the knowledge element into the statute, and they're not doing that. And so um, as you know, because you've practiced long enough to know this, on any given day in any given courtroom, um, you walk in with what could be a very policy-driven um issue. But you're not wrong, and your argument about preemption is one that's being made by the jurisdictions that have chosen to adopt a comparable ordinance.
And wha- what, if any, indicators do we have that the state's gonna take action that's held up in committee by people who have what I think are fairly radical views?
Um, Mr. Mayor, your question is spot on with the feedback that we're getting from our lobbyist, who is saying that um it's not even so much stalling out. It's that the legislature is specifically wanting to look at a different approach. And as you know, some other states are taking a different approach to this, trying to look for more of a social services response. Um, some of the things we're hearing is that maybe some of these drugs should be treated more like liquor violations. Just a generally more permissive and social services approach. Where they will end up, I don't know. But um, you are correct that it it could come to pass that the legislature will not uh repair the hole that that was uh found in this ordinance. Um, the more disconcerting piece is if they chose to go so far, and there's some indication that they might of um bolstering their preemption, taking affirmative steps to um ensure that cities don't have the ability to regulate this area.
Yeah, they've had a house cut off already. Is there any bill that's pending that addresses that?
I'm not aware of the specific bill. I do know that we got feedback from Brianna Murray earlier today that she was saying um that she thought that they were going to potentially take that action. I can certainly follow up and find out if anything um was was made of that because, as you know, they all buy it certain point if there's not action taken. But without action, um, we are simply left with the hole. If they do it all, we still have the problem created by the court ruling.
So today, open heroin use in Lakewood is not subject to any police action. Is that correct?
I think that's a chief question.
Mayor Anderson, council members, thank you. And uh first, before I forget the numbers, um, there are four bills that I was just made aware of. Fifteen fifty-eight, fifty-nine, sixty, and sixty-one, all House bills that address this in some form or another, um, mostly different components of it. Um, all that you, uh, I just was made aware of those, so I don't, I can't even speak to any of them, really. Um, as far as enforcement goes, um we could not charge somebody with possession of heroin. However, um, I think um the city attorney included this in her analysis. In almost every case, um, drug possession um goes along with another charge. Um, so you arrest somebody for shoplifting or trespassing or DUI, and you find the drugs on them subsequent to in a search subsequent to arrest. So there's these other charges that we deal with, and when we do find those drugs, it's still a controlled substance. And we've already spoken with our legal advisor about that, and we we are still taking that um and just submitting it to our property room for destruction because it is, like I said, a controlled substance. So they just would not have the um criminal charge that goes along with it.
It's it's my understanding that it's often a tool in the enforcement of a what I would call a cluster of charges involving criminal activity. So somebody may have shoplifted, sold store and property, and is cut with drugs. And when all the charges go down, that's where the deals start being made. Is that accurate?
Right. I think every charge that's that's there is a potential, has the potential to be dealt. Um, and when you take that away, that is one less um potential.
Yeah, and to be clear, um, that is absolutely normal in high-volume courts. Uh, our court handles about four thousand a year. Um, they're not all going to be pursued to the ends of the earth. And so, yes, it's beneficial to have more than one charge so that you can um implement some form of a plea bargain, and that is absolutely true at the county level.
Mr. Reddster.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, I guess I was wondering whether this is situation has a quantity element to it. Uh, I mean, I I are we still at a point of where quantities over a certain amount are um seizeable and chargeable?
It would be a quantity that uh we would reasonably believe was for delivery or or distribution as opposed to just personal possession.
So is reasonably believed something that that would be a uh something that would, the county would still look, take that case for prosecution? If they were concurred with a reasonable belief?
I I would suspect so. I would hope that our uh um investigators and and officers would have some level of communication with the prosecutor's office to know what their charging standards are um before, you know, making the arrest or or making an assumption, but um it that the charging decision is still up to the county. Our officers will make the best decision they can, and if, you know, the the county prosecutors see things the same way, they'll charge, and if not, they won't.
In some case, oh, I'm sorry. I was just gonna say, in some cases, if a prosecutor declines to file charges, it comes to us, and we can review for charging as a misdemeanor, but that is not true on the drug cases because there's no such thing as misdemeanor possession of heroin, misdemeanor possession of meth.
And is this situation have any impact on um future or past seizure funds that we have from time to time acquired from drug cases uh in in and and used in for those sorts of investigations?
I'm going to say no because uh those are almost exclusively from distribution cases and not from possession cases. So in fact, I think by, you know, in order to be able to see something, you have to show that the person was profiting from the distribution of drugs and not just possessing it. So um we are, that that should not be impacted by this.
And and my last question is how does this situation impact our guidance to school resource officers who come across someone or have someone reported to them being in possession of drugs in the schools, which have traditionally been drug-free zones?
Well, they're still a controlled substance. Um, right now juveniles can legally possess them like anybody else. Um, so we would go if a an SRO went and got the call from the school, they would go and take possession of uh the drugs, and then the school would handle um the student with whatever administrative um punishment or whatever they would want to do. But there would be no criminal charges coming from it.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bulkey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I I se- several comments. Uh, I understand waiting for the legislature. Um, I I don't think they are gonna do anything unless they can bucket up more by by tightening the preemption side because I believe a preponderance of the legislature does feel that drug use is a crime. They look at it as a sickness. And so um I I I don't think they're gonna do anything. I think we do need to be prepared. I I find it kind of interesting and intriguing the idea of when does heroin go from personal use to, you know, dealing it? And how is that decision made? But I'm not gonna ask you to 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 try to how you balance those those scales or how much meth somebody must have have to have uh before it's considered distribution. So I, you you know, I do, I do have concerns that we're not doing anything on the felony side, but part of me thinks that some of this stuff at low levels shouldn't have been felonies in the first place. Um, but I do realize there would be a fiscal note to what we're doing. Um, and so I think we would need to go forward i- i- if we do decide to go forward after the legislative session with this, we would have to understand the fiscal note. I mean, if we had a prosecutor ask for thirty days every time for small amounts, you you know, maybe it wouldn't be too costly, what the cost of prosecution would be, and and then maybe in some cases you wouldn't prosecute at all. So I would need to understand the fiscal note. But but like I said, part of me is like, maybe it shouldn't shouldn't have been a felony, and that's one reason why we weren't sending people to jail just for this charge, right? We had to pile on other charges and then say, well, we're throwing that in and we'll throw that out, and that way you'll only get ten years and five months instead of, you know, eleven years. And so I, you you know, I I thi- I think the legislature you know, this would be a, this would be something I think we should consider doing going going forward. I I really do think that we need that tool and um, I think at times it could be valuable for us to do. And so uh, but it's gonna be expensive, uh, or at least I I I just don't know how many prosecutions we'll end up doing. But I but I think it gives us a in some cases, a hammer to to do some things. So I think we we should consider it and see what the legislature wants to do. I'm not gonna argue about the preemption argument. I don't I don't know about that. Um, I think it's kind of interesting that the legislature could abandon the field but still say that they are on it. Um, so I, you you know, I but judges are judges and, you know, they they decide things like that. So anyway, that's my two bits. Thanks.
There's a two other things that I I think are uh maybe they were intended consequences, but I think unintended consequences of of not having a uh any offense. One is that when people need treatment, whether it's behavioral health in the mental health setting or behavioral health in the addiction setting, there's been a lot of of talk about behavioral courts. We have our own veterans' court. Uh, the lever to get someone into treatment is a criminal charge. Uh, and maybe the drugs are their problem, and that's a a lever to uh get them help. Otherwise, there is there are very few folks who will go and go through a social service path on their own, relatively few. And the behavioral courts have had quite a a success. The second one is if you look at people's that they would call them career offenders uh rap sheets when they're uh convicted of uh, you know, when you you have a high, high-profile crime, you will often see a laundry list of UPSC unlawful possession of controlled substance on their their conviction sheet. And it's anecdotal, but I'll, I think a lot of the reason is somebody gets in a fight, somebody steals something. There it's got a very low point value on sentencing. And so that ends up being the charge that they were uh they were convicted of when they were really uh doing something else uh at the same time. So there's there are a lot of dynamics here. Uh, but uh I'm concerned about maintaining the appearance that we're not the Wild West. Mr. Waylon.
Well, I would be in support of of main hit maintaining that appearance, certainly, and avoiding the appearance that we're gonna become anything close to what Seattle is experiencing. But my question along the lines of your comment on the drug treatment, I understand that the gateway uh at the county level is obviously the felony prosecution gets him into a drug treatment, I believe, is an alternative to sentencing. Is that right, Heidi?
Oh, it's a dis- it's a dis- it's a district court.
District court, okay. So I get my my concern, though, is we're limited at the gross misdemeanor level. Is that a sufficient gateway or window that we can utilize to get folks into similar treatments, a treatment activities that are available to the county folks? How does that all work? I just don't.
Well, right now, uh, we do have access to some treatment facilities. We may or may not want to look into whether or not we'd want to contract with some treatment providers, but we do deal with treatment providers uh currently. It's not necessarily connected to that specific crime. But if someone has a drug issue or a drinking issue or those kinds of issues, we do connect them with services. Um.
Do we do that with veterans' court, and to whom do we send them?
Veterans' court, we work closely with the veteran service providers, specifically.
That's right. That's right. Okay.
Hospital and whatnot. And so we're very networked for that. Um, that would not be too challenging to do. The question of um whether or not there's a sufficient hammer at the misdemeanor level. Uh, the mist- gross misdemeanor jurisdiction is three hundred and sixty-four days and five thousand dollar fine. So um it, I would think that that should be enough to um encourage a person to do what they're supposed to do, but I've been surprised before by some of these individuals. I think um it would require some working through the logistics, kind of a court we are at that point. Currently, the court is um sort of tailored for what it does. In veterans' court, we're tailored to deal with the the number of veterans we get and the kinds of services we're able to give them. If we started dealing with these other drugs, we would need to be looking at whether or not we are set up to properly channel these people and and know that they're doing what they're supposed to do. But it's, you know, that's something that could be done.
But I think the process starts with calling a spade a spade, in my humble opinion, that, and that is uh drug possession beyond that which has been legalized in the state is not a cool thing because it leads to other problems for people, and it leads to other behaviors to become problems for not just the offender, but for the people whose car is broken into, whose business is broken into, whose home is broken into to feed those habits. And so to the extent we can send a message in Lakewood, uh, given the vacuum that seems to be our state legislators, I think we should send the message. And and ultimately, I I hope that it can lead to some treatment for those who really need it and can benefit from it. But for those who want to be knuckleheads, I think it sends a message that Lake was not a place to be a knucklehead. And if you're gonna be a knucklehead, go somewhere else. Otherwise, you're gonna be held accountable here. So I would be in favor of doing something.
Other questions? I'm seeing any move to comments by the city manager reports.
So Mayor, first of all, is there any direction you would like to give us regarding this particular, this last subject matter, controlled substances?
I think it's going to take a vote one way or another, so place it on the agenda for the next regular meeting to.
Do we want to ask if there's any consensus so we don't waste our time or do we want to just put it on the agenda?
I'd use my discretion as mayor to put it on the agenda.
So you, you want to go ahead with it right away or do you want to put in a, an effective date that's after the legislative session?
I think we can always repeal it if there's corrective action at state level or something that's inconsistent.
Yeah.
Otherwise, it's just further delay.
The only comment I would make in response to any of that is that I know that Councilmember Bulkey specifically talked about any kind of a cost bill or fiscal note associated with this. We will come up with something. It's not going to be as precise as you might have become accustomed to because we have about a week. We can give you some idea, though.
I, a lot of that has to do with prosecutorial discretion. I think you know the prosecutor pretty well.
Actually, City Attorney, we have two weeks since March 29th is, so we have a little bit more time.
It's still right now a lawyer in math, but I will do what I can do.
All right. Mr. Cloughill.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening again, Councilmembers. First off, I'd like to do a walkthrough, talk through of your, the draft city council agenda, which is scheduled for this Saturday, March 27. The timeframe that we've identified is 8:30 AM to 1 PM. And the reason for that, that's consistent with some of your previous retreats that you have. First, a bit of a logistics update. So the council has a desire to meet in person. So we have, actually, I was down there this afternoon with the city clerk. So we have set up the city council chambers to allow for the six-foot social distancing that's, that's required. So basically, we'll have council members set up on the dais, coming down to the lower part. Where typically myself and the city attorney and the city clerk sit all the way around the front, where we'll have individual workstations for three more council members. And kind of a U-shaped, and then we'll have at the end a place for our facilitator, along with some, some boards and the white screens that we, that we typically use, use as well. The, the meeting, so under the state, the guidance that we've gotten from the governor's office, so since you are meeting in person, the public is allowed to attend the meeting. However, there are restrictions in terms of how many can be in the room. And I thought it was 25. It's actually 35 people can be in the room. And so we, we will, we have all of that spaced out and marked out in terms of where people can sit. And B, we'll also have a police officer at the meeting, making sure that people are, you know, coming in and wearing a mask and, and, and things, and things along, things along those lines. The meeting will be, be available via Zoom in the city's YouTube channel. In addition, as part of Zoom, folks will have the ability to call in and listen on their telephone as, as, as well. And again, that is a requirement under the guidance that we've received from the governor's office. You know, one of the things that we had thought early on was that, you know, the council and staff, we could meet, you know, in the council chambers and then just have the public have access remotely. However, the public has to have actual, physical access as well. So we can't, we're unable to do that. As far as the agenda goes, you know, really this agenda, this is a follow-up to the retreat that you had last March, on March 7th, 2020. Of course, some major things have changed since then, big thing being, of course, the pandemic. You know, starting off kind of a welcome and then, you know, some team building and some reflection, both individually and as, as, as a council. Also, if you remember at the last retreat, we had an update in the strategic plan outlining the accomplishments from 2018 and 2019. We're in the process of adding to that, you know, kind of at a, about a 10,000-foot level, you know, the 2020 accomplishments. So we'll have that in your packet. And then also, we will have the review of the March 2020 retreat that was prepared back in July and was downloaded onto your iPads, which actually includes a redlined outline of draft 2021, 22 goals. One of the things I would also ask you, just given, you know, kind of the way things have changed, is perhaps considering having goals not just for 21 and 22, but also extending out into 2023 as, as well. In terms of priority setting, that's kind of the next section of, of the agenda. You know, at a very broad level, we've identified, okay, COVID-19 recovery. Basically, what we have done is we've prepared essentially a white paper on the ARPA funding that you heard Mr. Gumm reference earlier this evening, including, you know, options and strategies and how these monies can be used locally. Also, I think as, I think, believe as the mayor pointed out, there's probably going to be a lot of duplicity in terms of funding that's available from other sources as, as well. One of the things that this, I know a number of you have asked is, since the monies can be used to offset the revenue losses in our general fund, what is that? So our, our finance director, our chief financial officer and assistant city manager has done that analysis, comparing our 2020 actuals to 2019 actuals, which are pre-COVID, and then doing the same thing for 21 and 22 budgets. And that actually equates to a three-year total of a little over $7.5 million. So half of the money that we're receiving. And again, that's if council wishes to do that. Also want to point out that we still haven't received the official guidance or direction from the US Treasury Department on how that's supposed to be calculated. So what we've done is really just based on our own estimation of how we think it should be done. We'll also have other ideas and options that our team has put together in terms of how these monies can be utilized. One thing to consider is that there is plenty of time to utilize these monies. It's not like the CARES Act money, where we were under the gun and the monies had to be spent in literally six or seven months. We have until the end of 2024 to have the monies allocated, not spent, but actually allocated. And also, the, the funding distribution is going to occur in two tranches. The first one is expected to be in the next 60 days by perhaps the end of May. And then the second tranche would be in 2022, 12 months from then, so about May or June of 2022. You know, another item that I've heard the council talk about is, you know, what do we look like as a community post-COVID? So kind of a broad subject matter there. And then another item that I've heard from a number of council members is the subject matter of diversity, equity and inclusion. And then, of course, if there are any other items that the council wishes, wishes to talk about. And then what we'd like to do is bring it all together in terms of, you know, going through a priority setting process. You know, what's needed, what needs to be updated. And then from there, we would come back to you at a later date, again, with revised goals and objectives as a follow-up to what was prepared as a outcome from the March 7th, 2020 retreat. And I think, as I had mentioned to all of you, Shannon Kelly Fong, who helped facilitate this council's retreat last March and who has left us to go on to bigger and better things, has agreed to come back and facilitate this discussion and this event with the city council. So we look forward to having her back on our, on our team, at least for a day or a short period of time as we, as we go through this process. So that's my report, Mayor and Council. And certainly if there's, again, this is in draft mode, so if there are any changes, additions, et cetera, please let me know and we can get that squared away for you. What we'd like to try and do is get the packet out by close of business on Friday, if not the early part of Thursday. So you have a couple of days to review it in advance of, of, of your retreat on Saturday morning. So Mayor, I'll turn it back, back, back to you.
Questions or comments? I think we may want to specifically include in the DEI section violence against the Asian community. Ms. Bell had contacted me asking what our history was. And I think a good example today was the chief's appearance on Korean media. And we had that outreach. But I'll tell you a little bit more. I did contact Little Pritchard at the APCC and talked to her. She was to get me some more contacts, which I haven't received yet. I talked to her, I think, Saturday. So we can throw that on there. Tacoma is doing a resolution of some type.
Actually, Mayor, Chief Zaro will, will be on the Korean radio station this, this Wednesday morning.
Anything else from council? And we'll go to council comments. Mr. Bradstetter.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I would only note that I had two occasions this week to testify before committees of the legislature. One was on the, the bill that is, looks to increase the authority of the Utilities and Transportation Commission in terms of rail safety in the state. And the other had to do with behavioral health and involuntary commitment for veterans of providing them some opportunities to get treatment at the Veterans Administration facilities rather than being restricted to those that are available locally. And both bills seem to be received well by their respective committees. So I'm hopeful they'll move forward. That's all I really have, Mr. Mayor.
Thanks. And likewise, we really appreciate your willingness and activism in testifying before the legislature. But you might want to talk to Ms. Walker about counting your days. Because there, at least there used to be a point where if you hit so many days, I think it's days as opposed to hearings. But I'm not even sure of that. You have to register as a lobbyist, even if you're not compensated. A number of years ago, I was counting my, probably 15 years ago, so laws might have all changed to it. I was counting my days to make sure I didn't go over the magic limit. Okay. Ms. Moss.
I'm good, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just wanted to reiterate, thank you for addressing the API community and that I'm excited for the retreat this weekend to talk more about all of that. Thank you.
Mr. Bulkey.
I don't have anything for tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Ms. Farmer.
Speaking of testifying, I'll be testifying tomorrow morning on 5163, which regards the treatment and placement of sex offenders in local communities when they're ready to be released. And the bill passed the House Senate and it's on its way in the House. And it picked up a couple of good floor amendments and so we're, we've got our fingers crossed. That's it.
Okay. Mr. Whalen.
Yes, indeed. So Thursday was a busy day. I attended the Pierce Transit Board Retreat. The majority of the conversation was the board's interest in receiving feedback from the board and pushing forward the point three tenths of a percent for Pierce Transit's needed funding to enhance and increase their service hours. And so, given the pandemic and the differential impact on communities of color and low-income communities, they believe strongly that there's a need to increase service hours to reach out in a better way to the community. So they're looking to bring that forth to the ballot. So more to follow on that, but that was a major topic conversation at the Pierce Transit Board Retreat. They're also looking at some realignment studies right now on actual stops along various routes to see if they can reduce the number of stops and thereby actually enhance some efficiencies to increase service hours as well. So they're doing some good work in that regard. At the Pierce County Regional Council later that afternoon or evening, Councilmember Farm and I attended. And we were helpful to at least have two votes in support of the, the transportation countywide funding list. And Lakewood received really the majority of the funding for surface transportation program monies in the $2.26 million range for Silicon Boulevard improvements, 83rd Avenue to Weller Road. So that was a good vote in the right direction. And I was happy to see that Lakewood's project came out really on top. Out of all the funding on the categories of service transportation program monies, ingestion management, air quality monies, highway improvement program monies and transportation alternatives, we received the highest of the board out of all. So kudos to staff, I'm sure, for putting together a good proposal. I don't know if you knew about that, John, but it was a, a good vote, so.
Mayor, may I make a comment on that?
Please.
Thank you, Mayor. You know, Deputy Mayor, you might recall last year, you know, Lakewood, we had some concerns on the recommendations that came at the staff level at TCC in terms of what we believed was, quite frankly, an unfair process and really not focused on the facts, if you will, and the engineering standards. And we were just befuddled that Silicon Boulevard didn't get the funding and comparing to projects that did. Something just stunk in Denmark, quite frankly. And, you know, the action of the elected officials really significantly righted a wrong there because you made a decision based on the engineering facts and the, and the necessary corridor improvements. So I want to thank you and your colleagues from the other cities for, for doing that. And I think, as you know, Mr. Bucic continues to have dialogue with the TCC on that for the next round of funding so that there is, you know, essentially not just fairness, but quite frankly openness and transparency on how projects are rated because it is done. It's, it's, it's a bit of a secretive process. So thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Hey, John, Deputy Mayor, can I ask a question now that we're in the middle of this? Because I'm, I'm a little bit, try to, John, try to help me here. Do we have, so this is 83rd between Weller and 83rd. We've got money up to Weller from the east. Do we have anything from 83rd to 87th?
Yes, we do. Remember I reported earlier this year, late last year, that we got a, another grant to complete that segment? So basically, we now have funding to continue the improvements from Weller all the way down to 87th.
The 83rd, 87th one is the one where we got the million four?
That's correct.
So this is, this is in addition to what we already got.
That is correct.
Wow, okay.
That is correct. And of course, and of course, the improvements down to Weller from 88th and, you know, Custer is going to occur later this summer and fall.
Are you thinking about doing that?
Putting in the sidewalk.
Okay. Are you thinking about doing Weller to 87th all at one time?
We're going to have a conversation about that internally now that Deputy Mayor Whalen was able to secure the, you know, those monies. So, so the short answer is yes, we'll have that discussion. And so it will, because since they're separate grants, you know, that's one of the challenges we run into. But what we can do is we can design it at the same time and then bid it as two separate projects.
Yeah, that, that's a huge win. That's great news. That is just great news. Yeah, I appreciate it. Great. Thank you. Sorry, Mayor or Deputy Mayor.
Not a problem. It's just a prelude of wins to come. That's all I can say. It's a great little wins to come. One last thing, there's, you know, we talked a lot today and we'll probably chat a little bit on Saturday about various financial monies flowing into the city of Lakewood and what we might do. And one thing we need to be at least cognizant of is there, there is certainly money flowing in from the, the feds and the state. But there's certainly requests for money to be flowing out as well. And so I already told you about Pierce Transit. But there's certainly requests for money to be flowing out as well. And so I already told you about Pierce Transit looking for their three tenths, uh, of a percent. We already know that the county passed their one tenth, one percent for behavioral funding. Tacoma is looking to pass a one tenth, one percent for housing. And maybe something that other jurisdictions start to look at. And I wouldn't be surprised if the library district at some point starts to chat about looking for a bond issue for, um, the library system. So it's just something to be cognizant of as stewards of, uh, the public trust, because we're going to be asked to make resolutions in support of any number of these things as they come across our docket. So, you know, we just have to be judicious because we can't be all to everyone. Uh, lastly, on Councilmember Bell's thought about support for the Asian community, I want to echo that. Um, as many, you know, uh, my law partner is an Asian woman of, uh, incredible esteem and, and, uh, she's, uh, you know, certainly a great person and is, uh, agreed by what she sees nationally going on. Uh, I have two other neighbors in our little tin house community. They're Asian folks, just fabulous people, including the owners of Happy Teriyaki and a hundredth. And while, you know, they have not been subjected to the vital uh, brutality of some of the other incidents in Atlanta, uh, she came and, and approached me not too long ago at the mailbox and her car windows had been smashed in at her restaurant location and her front door had been broken out. And they don't want to make a stink or raise an issue, but you know, they need our support as much as anyone, those communities. They are hardworking people in our community. They do a ton for Lakewood, uh, the Asian-American community here, and I think it's important to support them. That's all.
All right. I guess that's, I'll just say that's all, folks, and see you Saturday. Got a lot more time to spend together. But we'll be awake then.
Yep. Take care.
We're adjourned.